You'd be so nice by the fire while the breeze on high sang a lullaby. You'd be all that I could desire under stars chilled by the winter under an August moon burning bow. Oh, you'd be so well-niced to come home to. You'd be oh-so-niced by the fire while the breeze on high sang a lullaby. You'd be all that I could desire under stars chilled by the winter under an August moon burning bow.
Order the June 13 meeting of the Santa Barbara Planning Commission. Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd read the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Pujol?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Chair Jordan?
Here. First up, our action on the review of minutes and resolutions from the May 23 meeting. I think there, it's just a one-page resolution, so we could work through any corrections or revisions of those together, I think. Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I normally get these to Julie before the council, the planning commission meeting, but on page... Sorry. Four of the May 23 minutes. Second bullet, address dispelled with one D.
Good. Okay. Any others? Ms. Pujol?
Moved to approve.
As per the corrections?
As per the corrections.
And these are for both the minutes and the resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor or any abstained? None. Okay. Perfect. Ms. Brooke, any requests for continuance withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not.
And announcements or appeals?
Just two announcements. One is that next week's planning commission meeting, June 20, will be canceled. And so then the next planning commission meeting after that would be July 11. And then an announcement of just an upcoming public hearing on June 25, that's a Tuesday, the regular meeting of the council ordinance committee, planning staff will be there to begin our discussion of potential amendments to the hedges, fences, screens, and walls section of the zoning ordinance. Public notices for that have gone out to interested parties, and so just give you a heads-up and others a heads-up on that upcoming meeting.
So that's ordinance at noon or council at 2?
Ordinance at noon.
Okay.
In council chambers here.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Any public comment items requested for those not on the agenda? No?
No.
Okay. We'll open and close that quickly and get to our first item, which is an application of a coastal development permit for 448 Allen Road. And I'll let you introduce staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peggy Burbank, project planner, will be giving the staff presentation for this item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jordan and Commissioners. Can you hold on for just a minute because I'm having a technical problem? It came up on the... Oh, I know. Never mind. Simply solved. This project is located at 448 Allen Road. That's in the Campanile neighborhood of the city, or also known as Component One under the local coastal plan. It's basically the easternmost community neighborhood in the city. The defining streets are Cliff Drive and La Spacidus Road. Allen Road parallels La Spacidus and Oroboro Creek, and the little yellow box notes the location of the project. This is a close-up of 448 Allen Road, and it, take note that there is an existing house on there. The structure behind the house is a one-car carport. Oroboro runs along the back boundary of the property. Allen Road is to the east. This is the proposed site plan for the single-family home with attached garage. The light, the blue outline, is the existing structure on the parcel and the one-car carport that I mentioned a moment ago, Oroboro Creek, and the top of bank, and the green line denotes a 50-foot setback from the top of bank. You might notice the contour lines are quite busy over on the southern edge of the property. There is currently, the property is lower than others on the street, and I'll show that to you in a moment through photographs. The property, the project proposes to raise the site so that it is the same height as adjoining properties on either side of it. And in order to do that, the fill will extend onto the southern neighbor's property, and that's the green area I've identified down here that is across the southern property boundary. Okay, it's, the project requires coastal development permit, a single-family house and two-car garage on a 10,000-square-foot lot, replacing an existing single-family house, one-car carport. It's, the property is located in both the appealable and non-appealable coastal zone. The appealable portion runs adjacent to the Oroboro Creek and the property, and that is considered a coastal water. So the house, the proposed house would be 1,645 square feet. That's a little over 100 more than the existing house. A 434-square-foot two-car garage, which is obviously larger than the existing carport, but the total structure only increases far from 50% to 56% on the site. This is a front elevation along Allen Road of the proposed house. It's a one-story house that it actually, they'll be leveling the lot between the two neighbors, but it actually, because the road slightly, the terrain slightly slopes inward upward as it goes inland, the house actually steps up slightly across the width of the lot. The pop-up skylight or clear-story element is over the living area of the house. This is the existing house on this parcel, and you can see how you're stepping down from the sidewalk to get to the house. This is the neighbor on the north side. It's easier to see how in relation to this house, the existing house on the parcel is below the general grade of the neighborhood. And this is, the brown house is the house on the south side. There's two things I'd like to point out on this slide. Not the hang glider up in the corner, but the curb cut, if I can get my, the curb cut here that goes nowhere. The two parcels, 448 and 444, were a single parcel up until 1954. They were then subdivided, and the, there presumably used to be a driveway there that you could access the carport, but as it is now, there's no on-site parking. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is where the fence is relative to the two, the two neighbors. It's right about here, and that actually is not on the property line. This is just a little more than the neighborhood. This is looking across the street, and you can see how, where Allen Road, which does not curve, by the way, this is just Google view, is relatively flat. The side streets that go off of it to the west immediately begin to climb up, climb up the hill. So those properties are raised slightly as they go up the hill. Okay, going back to the site plan, as I mentioned, the new house, the proposed house is located right at the 20-foot setback, front yard setback, and extends between the two side yard setbacks, six feet on either side. But it is 50 feet at all points back from the top of bank, which is right along here. It's at the 27-foot elevation. The creek is here, and it slopes up. There's a drainage swale, and then it continues to rise to the 27th elevation and flattens out at that, well, flattens out, actually dips down currently, but will be leveled as part of the project. The main issues for this project under the coastal plan are neighborhood compatibility, creek protection and restoration, and potential hazards. The house is... Sorry, another technical problem. Apologies for that. Okay, so as far as neighborhood compatibility is concerned, the property is consistent with all of the requirements of the E3 zone as far as setbacks and the height of the structure. It's only a one-story structure, and as you may have noticed in some of the other pictures, that most of the houses immediately around this property are single stories. The building will be sited further back from the top of bank, from the creek than the original, the house on the property. You can see here, the original house extends further to the back of the property. It also is, the current house is basically non-conforming with the zone, although it predates it, and the new house will be, the entire house will be the 20 feet back from there. It also will provide the two-car garage, which since the current house does not have on-site parking, will take cars off of the street, which will be a benefit to the neighborhood. And there's a mature jacarand tree in the front yard, which will be preserved in situ. So as far as creek protection is concerned, the new residence, as I said, is 50 feet back from the top of bank. The carport will be removed and replaced with landscaping. All paved areas, these patios in the back of the house and the driveway and front walkway will be permio pavers set on gravel, which is two, our city's best management practices. All existing non-native vegetation will be removed, and only local native species will be planted on the creek bank within 30 feet of the top of bank. And landscape maintenance will be required in the conditions. So, by the way, when I get to the conditions, I'll explain that there is an additional sentence that somehow didn't get into the final, and so requesting that it be, recommending that it be added back in. So Commissioners, the findings for this project are that it would be consistent with local coastal plan policy 5.3 with respect to neighborhood compatibility, with the coastal plan policies 6.8 and 6.10 with respect to protecting coastal waters, specifically Oroboro Creek, with the Coastal Act, especially Section 30253 and the city's safety element as far as floods and hazards. And in regard to that, the house, because it'll be elevated further, will be set back further from the creek, and all structures are outside of the flood zone, will ensure greater flood, safety from potential flood. And the, as far as fire hazard is concerned, we're recommending that they try to use the least flammable vegetation. It's also being constructed, I believe the team can perhaps speak more to the actual structure, but they'll be using hardy board. Those are not cedar shingles, and it will have a metal roof. And as I said earlier, it is consistent with all the zoning requirements. So staff's recommendation is approval with conditions. The conditions are, many of the conditions are standard conditions that you're familiar with. I wanted to highlight some particular ones to this project because of the creek. The use of local native plant species for landscaping the creek bank and within 30 feet of the top of bank has been included in the conditions. And a restoration plan will require ongoing maintenance of the landscaped areas and replacement in kind if necessary. Also, as far as neighborhood compatibility, the applicant has identified an area for solar panels, but it includes both pitches of the roof, which would mean that some of the panels would be visible from the street. And so there's a condition requiring that they all be sited on the backside of the roof. And my last slide is to give you the proposed errant sentence to add back into condition Roman I, D to A, such that it would read, "A restoration plan," and this would cover removal of debris, existing vegetation, replanting, and plant maintenance, "prepared by a licensed landscape architect shall be provided for the Oroboro Creek bank and riparian area up to 30 feet west of the top of the bank." And then it goes on as in the conditions you have before you to require the use of vegetation that is native and locally sourced. That concludes my presentation. I would also mention that we received one letter from the public on this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So we will hear from the applicant today also? So we'll hear from the applicant first and then gather our questions?
Yes, Chair Jordan.
That would be great. I'm sorry, that's me. There we go.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Kurt Magnus. I'm the architect for this project. Peggy, thank you for that presentation. I think that pretty much covers everything I was going to say. We're meeting all the requirements from the city. We worked with Creeks Department to meet all their conditions. We're meeting the Tier Three requirements for stormwater management. We have a, you know, as I discussed this out in the field with you guys, we're keeping all the stormwater on the property. SFTB has given us conceptual approval. They like it. We got DART approval. It's compatible with the neighborhood, so not to waste any people's more time. If you have any questions, I'll be available. Thank you.
No questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page three of the staff report, I'm kind of curious. It says, "Adjacent land use to the east is vacant farmland." I wasn't aware we had vacant farmland anywhere out there. Could you explain that one?
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Thompson, that was a mistake. It's not agricultural. I guess I was hearkening back to my county days where A1 was agricultural. It's residential A1.
Oh, okay. That makes more sense. Okay, on page three of 10 of the conditions of approval, the proposed conditions of approval, item number two talks about a screen backflow device. It talks about a backflow devices for fire sprinklers, solar panels, and/or irrigation systems. And I'm confused by the reference to solar panels for a backflow device. Could you explain that?
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Thompson, I'm sorry, I cannot. I would need assistance from our, for our public works department to answer that, but I...
Well, can we...
I can get back to you on that.
Can we assume that the backflow device is for fire sprinklers and irrigation systems and eliminate solar panels?
I would, yeah, so we can strike that from the condition.
Or is that not a reference to older panels that used to run water through them on the roofs, or maybe just lurking in their skull?
Chair Jordan, it could very well be.
Okay.
Solar water heater maybe, but not solar panels?
Run water on their roofs and those things?
Solar water heater?
Yeah.
As opposed to solar panel normally refers to electricity. So either way, we would need to make some sort of a change there, either refer to solar water heater or eliminate it.
We would, we would strike solar panel and the word, and the slash or from that condition.
Thank you.
Ms. Pujol?
Sure, thank you. In general, I'm supportive of the project, but I have a couple of points that I'd like to have a little follow-up on. And the first one has to do with the landscaping and restoration, and thank you for that addition. That makes a lot of sense to me. I felt there was a bit of something missing in there. And in terms of restoration, what came to my mind is there's a substantial amount of ivy over the entire project site and down the creek. And I would like to know either from staff or the applicant if their intent is to remove that ivy, how you would go about doing it and keep it removed, which I think would be a very good idea.
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Pujol, it is the intent of the applicant to remove all vegetation with the exception of the jacarand tree in the front and an oak tree in the back from the parcel. This is primarily so that they can level the parcel and fill it, but a restoration plan will be required, and the condition has to be fulfilled before they go back to the single-family design board, and it will be reviewed by the Creeks Division. So Creeks Division can assist them in including mechanisms for keeping the ivy from growing back or the arundo along the creek from growing back. But those techniques would be sorted out in preparation of that restoration plan.
If I could get a little further clarification on that. So your new language says, "Restoration plan covering removal of debris and existing vegetation." I would actually... I would actually like to specifically include there the ivy. And then going further, replanting, plant maintenance prepared by a licensed landscape architect shall be provided for the Aurora Borough Creek Bank and riparian area up to thirty feet west of the top of banks. So it goes up to basically the line where the patios are going to be, and it goes from the creek bottom up? Is that what it does?
That is correct.
Okay. So I would be recommending that you include the word removal of debris and existing vegetation, including ivy, or some such thing like that in there. And then along that same lines, I'm a little unclear on how the, eventually how the irrigation will work. Do you propose that there not be any restriction on irrigation down the slope of the creek bank where, you know, natives are replanted, or how does that work?
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Pujol, in the conditions, and I'm looking for it right now, generally irrigation is required for a restoration plan only for establishment of the species, and once that they can make it on their own, so to speak, that irrigation system is to be removed.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, but I didn't see it, and maybe it belongs in that same section. I would support that idea. And then my last one is, the existing structures, including the dwelling and all, is going to be completely removed. So that's a lot of demolition removal. And how do you handle that? I didn't see a specific condition in regards to that. There's dust control and haul routes and things, but I didn't see anything in regards to how they're going to handle that large amount of demolition material. Is that something that's handled in the building department only, or how would you anticipate that?
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Pujol, I think it's an excellent question, because ideally, in my opinion, it would be nice if any usable materials out of the existing house were removed by Habitat for Humanity or another group. And I know that that has happened in other projects around the city, and it can be beneficial to the applicant. I don't remember the actual financial mechanisms, but it can be. So that would be one possibility, that some of the, like if there's usable doors or windows or cabinetry, or even fixtures such as toilets and sinks that could be removed and reused, you know, I think that would be the ideal. Having said that, the, I think the demolition is usually taken, any materials are usually taken to the landfill, but I do know that any concrete, although I don't believe there's a lot of concrete in this existing structure, and maybe the applicant can speak to this, would be recycled, and is required to be recycled by state law.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pujol, we do in some cases for projects have a somewhat standard condition of approval that we have that requires that recycling and or reuse of demolition construction materials be carried out to the extent feasible, and containers provided on-site for that purpose. So we could add a condition to that effect so that we know that, or at least going into container, I don't know if there's a requirement or not that it go to the distribution and collection facility where you can recycle construction materials, but some of it may be recycled in other ways, if not reused on-site with a condition like that.
Applicant have something to add?
Yeah, we can add notes to the grading plan to that effect, but it's all governed by the city's grading ordinance as far as dust control and best management practices as far as runoff and protecting the creek and stuff. So, you know, I don't think it's really necessary to have it in a condition, because we're already going to comply with the grading department's conditions.
You'd agree with that, Renee?
Well, I think in terms of dust control and runoff control, yes, that would be pretty standard for the inspectors to look out for in notes on plans. But if the point was more actual trying to reuse materials, then that's a different type of condition versus just trying to control demolition activity on-site. So it might depend on the intent of your question.
The intent of my question was because it's not, there are salvageable materials that usually come up, like hardware, cabinetry, and things like that that were mentioned, and also the appropriateness of sending certain kind of materials to different locations, which the wording could be kind of general on that, you know, send it to the best appropriate place and recycle and salvage to the extent feasible, some such thing. It doesn't need to be really, I don't think, much more specific than that, but some indication in there of a willingness and an agreement to make a reasonable attempt to do that.
That's good. We're okay. Others?
No, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question for staff, going back to page two of the staff report where you talk about the background of the project. And obviously, you know, what we're seeing before us today is Plan B. Can you explain a little bit about Plan A and the lack of staff support, and what that portrays for all of the other Allen Road residents, especially to the north, when the lots get smaller and you take a fifty-foot setback off the creek and a twenty-foot off the road? There's not going to be a building envelope left, I'm afraid, for the smaller lots north. So what happened in the initial review, and is this the only parcel that's going to have the fifty-foot setback from the creek along Allen Road?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Bartlett, I can't, my recollection is that the smaller parcels are when the road curves away from the creek, and it is the existence of the creek there that is requiring a greater setback. Normally, your rear setback would be six feet from the property line. The, so, I mean, I really can't look into the future, but you can-
Can you put the site plan up then?
Biggie, pardon?
The site plan would help kind of-
Oh, sure.
I mean, you can look at the residence to the south and to the north. The creek is curving in toward the road, so this site only has a thirty-six-foot-deep allowable building envelope. The site to the north with the creek angling in even further, they're going to be down to, I don't know, maybe twenty feet in depth. I mean, so they wouldn't be able to tear out and rebuild? They'd have to remodel in place, I guess?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bartlett, I think as we evaluate development on each of these sites, it has to be taken into account a balance of general plan and LCP goals and policies, because as you mentioned, we have front setbacks, we have, you know, established creek setback based on site-by-site. There's, you know, desired creek setbacks that can't always be met on every site, so I think it would have to take into account a balance of that. If we were looking at another site that didn't have the depth to really allow any type of a building envelope, given a fifty-foot creek setback and a twenty-foot front setback, it might be a case where we could support a modification of the front setback if, in balance, the creek environment were more protected, or, you know, other things can be considered on a site-by-site basis.
Was staff unable to support two-story then, as well, with the prior one? I'm just-
Chair Jordan, Commissioner Bartlett, yeah, to return to the first part of your question, it's my understanding from reading the DART from that original application was that the fact that the house was two stories and extended further towards the creek was part of the reason of considering it out of scale for the neighborhood. I recall in the notes that staff were willing to consider a modification for the front yard setback to allow the house to increase the distance from the creek. So staff exhibited some flexibility at that time, but in general, there was no support for the project. I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know more about the project.
Okay.
But that's my understanding from the history that I've read.
Luckily, this site is wider and deeper than all the others, so they can at least get, you know, a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house, but, you know, as the sites get narrower and shallower, I could see where that would be problematic for other neighbors to follow those same guidelines.
And further along, there are some two-story structures as well, so they would have also the option of going higher. There's a thirty-foot height limit, which would easily allow a two-story building.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start where Commissioner Pujol left off, talk about recycling and reuse. It may be that our practice has been to add a requirement, a condition of approval, rather, for recycle and reuse on some of our larger projects, maybe more commercial. But I'd like us to consider moving in a direction of adding this as a condition to what we might see as smaller residential projects, but where there's a complete rebuild. I think we're at a point in our city's evolution and in our ability to provide excellent recycle and reuse facilities at various areas in the city, that we want to strongly encourage that. So I don't want to overburden applicants and property owners, but at the same time, I think we need to be mindful of what we're doing with the materials that we're completely dismantling from a property. And I'd be interested, Ms. Brooke, to hear your thoughts and perhaps some guidance on that. Or if Mr. Vincent wants to weigh in on, you know, like the kind of legal boundaries for us to possibly consider that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, I think, you know, the condition I started to read is more of an encouraging-type condition, which is something that I think we could feel comfortable putting on a variety of projects. As you're recalling, it's more of a requirement on some of our larger projects where they actually have a mandate that a minimum of ninety percent of the materials be recycled or somehow reused in some fashion. And I don't know if we would go so far as to require that for every project, but if you're interested, I could reread the language and see if the applicant's comfortable with adding this condition. It is really meant to be to the extent feasible. You try to recycle or reuse demolished materials from the site.
And while I appreciate you hopping up and down, let me just, we're going to muddle through this ourselves, and I'll be happy to give you some opportunity to answer some questions later if somebody asks them to you. Okay? Thanks. Go ahead.
Mr. Vincent, did you want to, looks like you're going to the mic.
Well, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, your recollection of when the recycling and/or reuse of demolition materials, those are projects that are typically larger. Those are projects that more likely than not had an environmental impact report prepared where the volume of demolition material actually was probably reaching a level of potential significance as far as if it was all added to our waste stream, it would start triggering an impact or an impact threshold. I don't think the demolition of a fifteen-hundred-square-foot, single-family home would impact, reach that threshold. And while if the applicant is willing to reuse or recycle, I'm not going to stop any applicant from doing the right thing. However, before we go down the road of making another condition that would require that kind of activity on every project, I'd recommend that we really take a look at what does that entail? How feasible is it? You know, this particular residence, from what I can tell in the staff report, has been there since the 1940s. I don't know if it's been remodeled. I don't know if this cabinetry is falling apart or anything else. And so to require them, I'm sorry?
Part of that home was actually built in 1890.
1890? Okay. Anyway, it's been there a long time. So, I mean, I think it's one of the things of looking into the feasibility of it before we just kind of make a condition. Definitely, there's, there are opportunities there. It's the, it gets into a difficult thing for us to evaluate the, an ad hoc impact, whereas if there was a recycling or reuse ordinance of general application, it's an entirely different standard, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, and thank you, Ms. Brooke. And Mr. Chair, would you like comments later? Should we just do questions now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll continue on then. Thank you with my other question. And possibly I'm misreading this, but I'm trying to align what we have on page four of the staff report regarding local coastal plan consistency. And it says in that first paragraph, "This proposal is not consistent with the local coastal plan land use designation," and it goes on to explain why. And yet, on the next page, page five, under Roman numeral nine, findings, "The project is consistent with the policies of the California Coastal Act, City's local coastal plan, all implementing guidelines." Now, am I misreading any of this, or do we have an inconsistency within the language that we're using regarding consistency?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Schwartz, the, our recommendation is that the project is consistent with the policies of the local coastal plan. However, it is inconsistent with the land use designation. And I was making a distinction between those, although I clearly didn't make it clear that I was making a distinction.
No, you might have. I was just, you know, I didn't know if we were nuancing this, but it sounds like you're kind of teasing apart the difference, separation of policy and land use designation, and that's appropriate. So do you have any comment for me about how to, or do you consider these a non-issue, or do we need to reconcile them? I'd just be looking for some advice from you, yes.
You want to, Chair Jordan?
Commissioner Schwartz, just to make it really clear, the LCP land use designation for this area is one residential dwelling unit per acre, which this clearly is at higher, developed at a higher density than that. But this is an established subdivision rebuilding on a legal lot. It's not, it's not, while this is clearly not one dwelling unit per acre, there's nothing preventing them from rebuilding on this lot. So it's just being, it was just a very specific statement, but it is consistent with the local coastal plan.
And then pertaining to that, Mr. Vince, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Burbank, did you-
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Schwartz, just to add to that, as you know or are aware, the city is in the process of updating its general plan piece by piece, and the local coastal plan will be one of the things that will be updated, and at that time, conflicts between the two documents will be dealt with at that time.
And I'm looking forward to that. Okay, I have one more, I have a question though for Mr. Vincent about this. The, back to page four in this same paragraph, the existing parcel predates the California Coastal Act and Santa Barbara's LCP. So for the properties that are in this category that predate, you know, these, the state law and our own LCP, then is consistency even relevant in the sense that they came before, you know?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would, I think that that language and that discussion is really, is focused on the existence that the lot was created prior to the adoption of the Coastal Act, and at a time when this land had a different designation as far as general plan designation. Therefore, it's, I think it's speaking to the legality of the lot, as opposed to the proposed redevelopment of the lot.
Okay.
The proposed redevelopment, as the staff report demonstrates, has responded to the Coastal Act policies and the zoning policies as they relate today, and is complying with those. The existence of the lot is really the only conflict I'm seeing in the staff report between the general plan designation, which says that it needs to have one acre for a new lot. If this was a new subdivision, you wouldn't see a staff recommendation- If this was a new subdivision, you wouldn't see a staff recommendation to approve this subdivision because it wouldn't meet the lot size, and so you've seen that before in other cases.
Yes, we have.
This is a legal lot that was subdivided prior to other rules being placed upon this lot, subsequent to its subdivision.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. Lastly, we put back up the slide or the page that shows the entire property, Ms. Burbank. Like to ask a question about managing, let me just pull this up on my own document here. Everything being done on-site here, where is it? In the staff report, I think. While I'm looking for the exact page where you've referenced that, the destruction, construction, et cetera, will be managed on-site as opposed to off-site in the public right-of-way? Here we go, page six of the staff report, E2, constructions, storage, and staging. Have you, do you feel you've given sufficient thought to it being truly feasible to do everything on-site? There's going to be nothing on the street, nothing on the sidewalk that will impede the neighbors and other users of that neighborhood? And the reason I'm asking while you're looking at that, I'm quite familiar with this street. It's not that the neighborhood or Allen Road is so congested as it is by the neighbor's use, but when it's a beautiful day and a Royal Borough parking overflow, beyond the Royal Borough parking lot itself, Allen Road gets completely backed up, like halfway up the street, and so it's a heavily-used street for other purposes other than the residents that live there. So, I just wanted to see if you think this is, this really has been discussed thoroughly, and if it's feasible. I hope it's feasible, I'd like to ensure that this happens. Is it realistic?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Schwartz, I have to say this is a standard condition, and in this particular case, maybe it needs to be tailored to this particular project, given the location.
I'll just add, Commissioner Schwartz, that there is language in there that says, well, it says that no parking or storage may be permitted within the public right-of-way. They can request exceptions from that by the Public Works Department. So, if they find that there's some component of the project they can't contain completely on the site, then they can ask for an exception to that.
Okay, and then, lastly, and this is a one-word issue that we've dealt with on the commission before, and I've heard our city attorney weigh in on this, the use of "shall," you know, "may," "shall," "will." I thought that we were moving in a direction at some point where we're not going to use the word "shall," you know, I, yes? The op, well, so, I don't know if Mr. Vincent wants to comment. I thought I heard Mr. Wiley at one point say the "shall" should be reserved for the Ten Commandments, but quite frankly, other than that, we really need to be using other language, so, you know, I don't know if you've discussed that on staff or not, or if the city attorney's office has, but are we gonna, I think we should just decide how we're going to be consistent in some of this language. Yes, Mr. Vincent?
Are there particular "shells" that you're at odds with there?
No, I'm just wondering, I just think we need to start being consistent in the city, and we've had some back and forth about this, and I've heard the council ask Mr. Wiley's advice on this as well, and I'm not, I'm not sure where we're going with this, and okay. That's it.
Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. Question on hazards and seismic safety. I presume the, with the age of the house, this is a race, it's on a race foundation, so it really wouldn't be up to today's standards for a shaker at all. So, by doing these improvements, obviously, you're making it a much safer habitat, a home habitat, in this case, as well as landscape habitat. The other question is, the creek area itself, it's on the property, both the downslope bank and the upslope bank to the east are part of the property as well.
Chair Jordan and Commissioner Campanella, no, only the west slope of the creek is on the property. The creek passes along the eastern boundary, and it does just cross the southeast corner of the property, but only the west bank is on the parcel.
Okay. And the applicant, however, has, is required to landscape on the forest bank as well for the landscape plan, or do I have that? Okay, so he's, I'm sorry, that was the drainage well, okay, going down, so he's, all of the work that's being done is on, within the property of the applicant.
That is correct.
And then in the future, he would be required to maintain it as well? There's no city obligation to maintain the area?
That is correct.
Okay. The third item is on solar, I guess. If I understood correctly, the ABR requirement was if solar is put on in the future, to put it on the backside of the house? Did I hear that correctly?
Chair Jordan and Commissioner, yes.
Okay. So, I guess a matter of process, I don't know if it was studied by the applicant, but let's say when somebody wants to consider solar in the future and doesn't want to do it now, is any, do we anticipate that someone would actually take a meter or GPS and do a study that people do, that energy specialists do, to say, "Where is the optimum location, given the location of the house, that where you can get the most benefit for going forward with solar sometime in the future?" A question, was any study done, or was, did you come up with any particular part of the roof that would be most efficient if you were to do solar in the future?
No, we didn't. We're just required to provide an area which were, if the future tenant or owner would want to have it, that they could put it, and it is basically on the south side of the It didn't drive the overall design of the roof, but there is an area where you could put panels.
On the south side?
On the south side.
Okay. I was just wondering if there's any process where somebody says, "I want to do in the future," we can't require it, of course, but when it comes to design, whether our boards are looking at the fact that where is the most efficient place probably to put it, if somebody were to do it? And I think, I may be wrong, we just visited the site once, but the backside of the roof is really facing east, and you have a hill back there, right? You have the large hill across the other side of Las Pecitas, so I would think, one, if they really wanted to do it, was, if they wanted to do it in the future, would be to show where the best location is and have the applicant be able, an applicant, be able to consider, well, it really works well in the front, because I'm going to get more sun, more effective use of the sun, here's the study that shows that, and we can build it into the construction when we're doing the house in the first place. In other words, having enough fall on the roof, or length on the roof where you can get two panels in instead of one, two racks in. So, I guess that's, knowing that you weren't obligated, that's really not my point, as much as trying to maybe have some type of discussion in the future with, how does a determination made on where solar should go based on functionality versus maybe on discretion? And maybe we can get some more information on that in the future. Okay, well, thank you for your comments on that.
Yeah, I can, the, it's part of the, there's a ridgeline here, this is called, this area here, I mean, we weren't aware, we weren't aware. We weren't aware of the condition of not having the solar panels being shown from the street. I think, I don't think that was an SFTB condition, I think that's a planning department condition. So, that in effect cut half of our area out that we were planning for the future panels. You will get sun on the roof there, it may not be the most efficient, but you would be able to get a fair amount of panels, either water or electric, on the roof.
But if you're allowed to go in the front, you would have gotten more utilization, correct?
Yes.
As intended. So, at some point in the future, somebody has to do a cost-benefit analysis to see, given the conditions in the area that you're, you have available to operate in, whether it's worth it or not.
Right, and there's a lot of actual panels, if you look around town, that don't, you know, they are on east and west, generally on the south sides of buildings, so they do work, they may not be the optimum, but they do, they do work.
Okay, so I guess then it's a question, if it's a planning issue or a planning department issue, then maybe that, maybe we should have the discussion centered on that, on how this is determined, where the panels can go or not. Thank you for the comments. Thank you, Chair Jordan.
Ms. Burbank, I just, all my questions are really related to concerns over the D2, the Creeks Division part and the conditions. And so, that condition says 30 feet from top of bank will just be native vegetation, but the landscape plan shows fescue sod, which I'm surprised to see is being classified as native vegetation. It also sneaks some other, some other landscape icons in there that are on the top part of the landscape plan and not identified as native plantings on the, on the plan, and it's the first time I've seen Mexican beach pebbles called landscape planting. So, could you tell me how we're actually getting to 30 feet back from the top of bank is going to be planted with native?
Chair Jordan, I've just put a copy of the landscape plan up for the commissioners and public to review. This is the plan that was submitted, and that is part of the reason for the condition, because we recognized with assistance from the Creeks Division that there were cultivars mixed in with the native species, and so the, the reason for the condition is to go back and get assistance from Creeks Division in determining the appropriate species to include, in particular, in the restoration portion of the landscape plan.
So, is fescue sod a native species?
I don't believe it is, I'm not a biologist, but what I'm saying is, is that when they work on the restoration plan and landscape plan, prior to going back to the Single Family Design Board, they may choose to change that to something more, more suitable to this particular ecosystem.
I don't like the word "may" because the condition says they will.
Well, then they will.
Okay, and then, I'm also just concerned, just with that whole general language in there, do you, when you talk about in D2, in that, you had that revised language slide you put up, and the phrase on there was concentrating on 30 feet back from the top of bank, and also what you called the Royal Borough Creek Bank, is your intent there to landscape as part of the restoration plan under that, under that condition, down to the toe of the bank? Because the toe of the bank's quite a bit of ways from the top of bank. So, is, when you say the bank, are you, are you specifically thinking you're talking the toe of the bank?
Yes, Chair Jordan, it's, the restoration plan is to include the, the west bank of the creek up to, to the top of bank, so that would be from the toe to the top of bank.
Oh, to the top.
And then, 30 feet back from that towards the structure.
Okay, and then, how do you see the second part of that, that condition working out, where it just kind of says the applicant is going to meet with the Creek Division staff to review and get approval back from the Single Family Design Board? What, what, what happens if the Creeks planner wants no fescue grass in the 30-foot section, no pebbles, doesn't want a fence growing, that's not a native planting in that 30-foot back section either, but the applicant wants that? How does that all play out internally in the department? Who has the final say?
Chair Jordan, the condition was written to, specifically this way, to give the Single Family Design Board, as the decision-maker, the final say on it.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Yep. So, no further questions, I have to open up public comment, and I don't see anybody, correct? Okay. So, we'll open that and close that, and I promised the applicant an opportunity for any responses to anything you've heard other, before we get to our comments, so happy to let you have some more time. We have a big crowd stacked up behind you, ready to go, so we've got the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Actually, you know, going back to recycling, that issue, when you, when you go to the transfer station in Marburg, they separate all the materials, the metals, the woods, that's the drywall, that sort of thing, so a lot of that recycling is already happening in the county, so I think, you know, your concern may be valid, but it, you know, it's already happening. And the Creeks, the top of the bank, it's, I don't know if you could go back, Peggy, maybe to my site plan, there was a whole back and forth going on between Creeks, you know, on the previous app, design, as to where the top of bank is, you know, and all our consultants established it at that line that's kind of halfway between where the Royal Borough Creek is indicated and the top of bank is shown in green, so, and then Creeks came back and said, "No, this is where the top of bank is." So, as you move up and down, I think with Commissioner Bartlet, that top of bank's going to have to be, you know, it's gonna, Creeks wasn't very cooperative as far as coming up with, you know, where that top of bank is, and so this, you know, instead of arguing with the Creeks and the department and going for mods and all this other stuff, I just recommended, why don't we, because the owner was, you know, was burning up a whole bunch of money in consultants and studies, we just wanted to get the project going, and so we've come back with this revised solution. But yeah, this is a unique situation that I would, I would hope that the city would be a little bit more flexible in some of these things, but, you know, we just didn't want to argue anymore, we want to get the house built, so. And the landscape plan incorrectly shows the creek and landscaping on the opposite side of the creek, Mr. Campanella, so the creek actually is shown correctly at the far property line, so that may have been part of the confusion of why there might be planting going on on the other side, but in fact, there really isn't, so, anyway, thank you.
So, I can tell you, running up and down this creek, the argument over where top of bank is is not a new argument, don't worry. We've had plenty of fun with that. So, comments and movement forward from the commissioners.
I could make a motion, if you like. Oh, I'm, go ahead.
Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Jordan. I think this is a very great improvement, a very great effort on the part of the owner to get both the house elevated properly, I know there's drywells going in, there's a lot of best practices that are going on to retain water on-site, and also to take care of the water before any that bubbles out and goes off-site. I think the house is going to be more energy-efficient, more safe, better look for the neighborhood, and I appreciate all of the time that he spent putting it together and all the agencies that had to be coordinated with on the effort. I think, design-wise, it looks good, it looks functional, and I'm in favor of the project as it looks, and I'll be voting for it.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Well, I think this is a good project for the neighborhood, it'll be an improvement for the neighborhood. I think it's a good project for a small portion of Royal Borough Creek, I know we've talked a little bit about creeks and tops of banks and all that. That creek needs a lot of help, and even though this is only a very small portion of it, it will be a definite improvement. And the whole reason that we're, this commission is even discussing this is coastal development permit, and as far as the Coastal Act is concerned, this project certainly is consistent with the intent of the Coastal Act. I would commend the applicant for dealing with all the disparate requirements from various and sundry city various and sundry city departments and coming up with a viable plan that I think will be an improvement for everybody. So I will support it, and I urge that we get on with it.
Ms. Pujo.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Addison and the others, and also appreciate Commissioner Capanella's comments about the solar access. I do think that would be good for a future discussion at some point, to see how that exactly works as it gets implemented. So I am supportive of the project with, with a couple of changes that were discussed here today, so I look forward to supporting that.
Chair Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think the applicant has really done a great job of trying to live with a myriad of constraints and still come up with a, you know, a viable project that looks good, and I think will be a neighborhood enhancement. I think, you know, it is a, seems like a disproportionate share of, you know, improvements compared to the small size of the house, but I think you need to start somewhere. I just hope that it doesn't backfire and become a deterrent for the rest of the neighborhood, having witnessed what you've gone through on such a small project. I mean, it's going to be great for you, but I'm, I'm afraid that others will look at it and go, I don't even want to go there. So unfortunately, I think that's probably going to be the precedent that's being set here. But I do think that this is a, a good proposal. I congratulate you for sticking with it and going through, and it's, it looks good, and it's an improvement for all the right reasons, so congratulations.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be supporting the project also. To the discussion that we had, and again, I was teeing off Commissioner Pujo's reference to recycle and reuse, I think at this point, I'm not so inclined to support words like encouraging and so forth. We've had this discussion at the commission before, and unless we're actually going to condition a project, I'm not sure that it's truly meaningful to simply put on paper that we're encouraging something unless one of my colleagues or Mr. Vincent would have another opinion about that. So, I'm going to not press for that in, in the course of this project approval. I think that rebuilding a house that seems to have evolved over time is perhaps the best way I could put it. I, I know this house, and it sounds like you're, you're really going to give sort of new life to the property, to the property owners. I think it is going to be an enhancement to the neighborhood. It's tough with such a confined lot as you have, but quite frankly, it, you know, when you decide to own or build next to a creek in Santa Barbara, these are some of the constraints that, that we just need to live with and to honor. So, I'll be interested in hearing Commissioner Pujo's suggested changes, perhaps, if that's where you're going. But other than that, I'm supportive of the project moving forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you Chair Jordan. I just wanted to add, I concur with the comments my colleagues have made, and I wanted to add that the, part of the improvement is getting rid of that thriving crop of ivy that you have there, which is invasive, non-native, and, and also the arundel that's down in the creek, which is equally, if not worse, invasive, in the invasive area. And I think it will be an improvement to the neighborhood, and, Ms. Pujo, did you, I would go ahead and make a motion if you have your-
When the chair feels appropriate, I could make a motion.
Okay. If you want to make the motion with your, with your changes? Oh, okay.
Is that okay? Okay.
All right, thank you.
You bet. So I would echo everything you've heard that's, that's good about it. I think it's a great improvement to the neighborhood, and I'm happy to see that there's nobody on the bride or the groom's side, whichever is the opposite, that you guys have got the only side. I share Commissioner Bartlett's concern in that area, and I swear I read the prior process a little different. I thought that you had asked for a, a footprint into the front setback, and you were pushed away by that, because I would actually be way more supportive of encroachment into the front setback, or a tuck-under, tuck-under garage with a second floor above that to, to gain back some space for the house and/or backyard, and kind of relieve you of this contradiction that's going on between the, the plans and the conditions for your backyard and the restoration area. We've done that before, most recently down on Bath Street for the Bradley project. We negotiated, I think, another five feet into the front setback to get an extra five feet of creek setback. I'm really just, I, you know, it sounds like the support is here, and I'm a little taken back by it, because I've seen us sit up here and talk details with other projects that were next to creeks, and the amount of setback, and the amount of restoration, and how that's going to work. And I just, I can't tell you how unhappy I am with the, the lack of, of clearness in that, that Creeks Division component of the conditions, the D2. The, and in particular, that we're looking at a landscape plan that contradicts that condition totally, but then the condition doesn't clearly take care of the contradiction that's on the, that's on the plans. It still leaves that open to discussion elsewhere and determinations that will be made by, by a design board that might not be looking at the same issues, at least that I am. But I'm, I, I see nobody else that's really following that along. But, in, in my, in my concerns for that, for that particular condition, I would not want to see anything in, anything done in the toe of bank to the thirty-foot line back from the top of bank that is not a restoration component. There should not be a non-native species planted, there should not be any other type of product put on the ground, there should not be a structure or a fence, that should be a restoration zone. And I think the prior negotiation that's already gone on between Creeks Division and the applicant has already negotiated that zone down to the thirty feet. They wanted fifty, and they've negotiated that down to the thirty feet, and gave them, gave them some space behind the house to have a, what normal backyard they could have. So, it's just where I would personally see that going. But I don't, I, I'm going to, I'm going to fall with the others in approval and, on faith for that condition, that it will actually work out that way. So, I don't see a need to rewrite it or worry about it down in the weeds, that level. So Ms. Pujo, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick comment relative to that. It appears that the, the condition and the landscape plan are at odds with each other, and that if we're approving the proposal, I would say that you sign the, the architectural proposal that's before us and have the conditions supersede the landscape plan that was attached. I'm not sure, I want to approve that landscape plan that is in conflict with the conditions.
So Ms. Brooke, how does that work? If there's a set of plans today, and we approve the project, and I'm signing the plans, but the conditions are obviously contradictory?
Mr. Chair, I understand the concern. In a typical project development process, there may be things that you see on plans that do get changed by the time they get to Single Family Design Board, within the context of what that design board reviews and approves. So it's not uncommon that what you see today in terms of landscape plan may actually change before they get final approval from SFB. But I think we can give SFB very clear direction about what that plan needs to have in it, and part of that is the revised condition that Ms. Burbank presented earlier in her presentation. And also, I'll just point out another condition that addresses some of what you might have concerns about, Chair Jordan, and that's B2 under the recorded conditions agreement. There's a development rights restriction for that first thirty feet of setback from the top of bank that limits the activities that can take place in that area, and it says that it shall be restricted and remain in their natural state. So-
So that doesn't include a fence?
Well, it does, it's correct. You can't install structures, do grading, you can't have irrigation there after plant establishment, no ornamental landscaping or utility service lines. And I assume they mean underground, because we know that the Edison lines run overhead on this property.
So again, the plan you're looking at is in contradiction to that particular section too, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That will have to be rectified at SFB. So when we get to the point, if, if we do want to modify some of the condition language, then I could maybe help with that.
Well, it's like I say, I could sit here for another half hour and make this the longest coastal plan development talk in the world, and try and rewrite that, that condition. But I'm personally, it doesn't seem that it's rising up to the level of concern with anybody else that it has with me. So I'm, I'm willing to move forward on faith, but I, I guess my message would be in the, in the future, it's a clear to me that we're only going to improve that stretch of the creek parcel by parcel. I mean, any other efforts obviously have just fallen aside. So, it needs to happen parcel by parcel, and, and sending it back with a, with a condition that clearly doesn't look like what's being shown by the applicant, and would clearly gives opportunity for another body to overrule, if you will, a Creeks Division planner in that process, just for, for my interest, does, doesn't seem right. But again, I, I'm only one person up here, and I don't think it's risen to the, to the level with everybody else, so I don't want to be the, the fly in the ointment. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you raise an issue that we have wrestled with in the past, and I, I too have wondered, not perhaps so much on this project, but others, where we have discrepancies between the plans that we have on the day of the hearing, knowing that they could further, they could be further modified, and the language that we have from staff to approve. So, I would like us to pause for just a moment and ask if, if in fact, the plan might change, the site plan, the landscaping plan might further change as it goes back to SFB? Is that, that's right, Ms. Brooke? Then perhaps we focus on the language, if there's an interest among some of the commissioners for conditions of approval, and then let all of the details, the design details be worked out between the applicant and SFB. Would that, would that, would you, that be appealing to you and satisfactory to you?
Well, only if there's a, an interest on the rest of the members. Ms. Pujo.
Thank you. No, I think you, I think our chair brings up a very good point for clarity in the conditions, and one of the things I suggest we could do is just add a little tag on to that D2A that says, "And the plan, and the landscape plan be revised to be consistent with project conditions." Because I think in this case, what we're finding is not the normal course of evolution of the set of plans, but we're finding a real mismatch with basically the entire plan in front of us that we're looking at on landscape with the condition. And I think when it gets to that level where it's being pointed out, pointed out by more than one commissioner about the mismatch, it, it wouldn't hurt to just make a point in the condition that we expect that, that landscape plan would then be revised. That's what I would suggest.
So noted. And if that, if that, if that sounds fine with me, and if that's fine with everybody else, I'll let you move on with a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion. First, I find the project to be consistent with the Coastal Act, the local coastal plan, and all the other referenced guidelines, ordinances, and documents in Section 9 of the staff report list on, on the findings, with some revisions to the conditions. And the first revision comes on page three, I believe. It was Commissioner Addison's comment about removing the solar panel reference term on item, I don't know what item it is, but it's number two there in the middle of the page, screen backflow device.
C2.
And then, the next one on page five, which we've been discussing at length, is D2. And so I recommend that language that I phrased a minute ago, that we add onto A at the back. So it would read "all planted areas," well, I actually have another, I think, clarification in there too. I would recommend that it be reworded to read "all planted areas within thirty feet at the top of Aurora Borough Creek between Aurora, there and the toe of the bank," which I don't think is mentioned in that phrase, "must be planted with native vegetation of local genetic stock only, and the landscape plan revised to be consistent with project conditions." I also recommend that the new language precede that statement, and that the first line of restoration plan covering removal of debris, comma, ivy and existing vegetation, or some such thing as that, to get the ivy in there as well. And then, I would like to try at least adding the encouraging condition that Ms. Brooke had, being that it is a standard condition that can be used sometimes, and if we're clear between, you know, the ones that are "shall," and this one that is more encouraging, is that almost as a reminder to applicants to consider when they're doing the demolition, I would be supportive of that. So I would like to try including that in, in the motion and just see how it, how it flies.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. And the motion?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I'm not clear on what, on what you just left. The language is to be revised, or?
Yeah. And Ms. Brooke has a standard condition, maybe she could-
Oh, okay.
...review that with us.
All right, thank you.
It begins by saying, "Recycling and/or reuse of demolition and construction materials shall be carried out to the extent feasible." So that's already a little bit contradictory. "And containers should, shall be provided on-site for that purpose in order to minimize construction-generated waste conveyed to the landfill." So it's, "shall be carried out to the extent feasible."
Where's that word again? Yeah. All right. Acceptable with anybody? Or was not, not unacceptable with anybody? Is that what I'm looking for? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Congratulations, you have a project. It only took an hour and a half. So, this project will be appealable in ten days, and look forward to the improvements you're making there. I understand from friends on that street that that was originally a fishing lodge when we actually had fish in the creek. So, it's a lot of history there that goes back to that building, so.
Played cards on that back patio, that's actually what that was.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll recycle these.
Oh, well, we can recycle them here if that's-
You might want to use them.
So, our last item of the day will be committee and liaison reports, and do we have a staff hearing officer report? Ms. Lodge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There, there wasn't anything to carry forward from the show's last hearing. It was another one of these extremely constricted lots between the, the front and rear setbacks and up on Skyline Drive, where this road is very narrow anyway. So, that was, I thought, handled well. And showing on to the Historic Landmarks Commission?
You bet.
Okay, they, in the last meeting, they spent a lot of time on 1601 State Street, which is the El Prado Motel, which has been determined to be worthy of structure of merit status. And so, yes, I see some expressions of surprise, which concurred with mine. And so there, there are, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, restoration of the way it was, and placement of signs, and all these other things, and colors, and so on. But that, I don't know if that is going to go through the process of being named a structure- of merit or not, but it certainly was up for discussion.
It's kind of refreshing to see something of the 60s that qualifies as, you know, motel-ish, kind of weird, yeah, not, not a red tile roof or adobe wall, huh? Mr. Thompson.
Well, the single-family design board is staying busy unlike ourselves. The last meeting, they had 10 items to cover, seven for the full board and three consent items. I think the previous meeting, two weeks prior, was almost that busy. So the remodel and additions in town seem to be running apace, even though large-scale projects aren't. Nothing new for us coming out of it, other than a few more coastal development permits.
Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, I attended the joint meeting of the Downtown Parking Committee and Transportation and Circulation Committee, and the primary focus of discussion was the bike station survey and bike station contract up at the Granada Theater. In short, the, both committees unanimously approved the one-year extension of the bike station contract, and also reviewed and posed various questions, which I won't spend our time on today, regarding the survey. The bottom line is that of the 400 individuals surveyed, 34% said that they bicycled to downtown, and 40% said they used automobile, and so now they're looking at, for those intensive bicycle users, would it be worthwhile? And in fact, I think there's some movement afoot to move forward on a small version of a bike station module, I think it's being called, at the, at Lot 3, the MT, near the MTD station. So that's it for my reports. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Monday, the Architectural Board review, contrary to our agendas, has a, had a big project, a 67,000-square-foot apartment building proposed by People's Self-Help Housing at the corner of Salsa Puentes and Haley. I was unable to see the video, it wasn't up yet yesterday, I think it just went up this morning, right before the meeting. But in reading the article in the paper, it sounds like perhaps ABR might not be on board with the, the overlay and the density that has been proposed in Plan Santa Barbara, and they're, seem to be objecting to the scale of the building, even though that's what's been identified in Plan Santa Barbara as the place to put housing. So it'll be interesting to see what happens as that moves forward. It won't be coming to us because it's all rental, but it will be going to the staff hearing officer, because in order to comply with the AUD policies that are not yet adopted as ordinance, they have to apply for several modifications to, I guess, process that under current variable density to get it approved. So I think that would be a good one to maybe have a report back to the planning commission, since we don't get to see it, as to how that works, since we've had so much debate as to what the rules are going forward. So I think this will be a good one to watch.
Okay. Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment on what Mr. Bartlett just said, the ABR still has the issues of size, bulk, and scale, whatever, that has been, you know, is proposed in terms of overlays or additional development, or, you know, development regulations. And it seems to me that they were responding to neighborhood concerns about how it was going to change the neighborhood. So I think there's, it's going to take a while till a, a place is found where it fits, the community is ready to accept it, and it has the higher densities, which can be done in a way that does not overwhelm the, the streetscape.
Nothing further, we'll be adjourned.